Good evening. Welcome to the April 18th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll? Ayana, would you please call the roll? Thank you.
Chair Chatters.
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Here.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
Commissioner Ballard.
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Here.
Commissioner Lark.
Do I have, do I have anyone who would like to call for approval of the minutes?
I move approval of minutes from last meeting.
Second.
Okay, Ayana.
This one again, okay. Commissioner Lark.
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard.
Yes.
Commissioner Finch.
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Yes.
And Chair Chatters.
Yes, thank you. Do we have any Commissioner reports this evening? Commissioner Lark? Oh, thank you for, thank you, Commissioner Lark, if you wouldn't mind.
Happy to do so. We acknowledge the original habits of this place, the Snohomish people and their successors, the Tulalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and the water. We strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more equitable and just society.
Thank you, Commissioner Lark, and thank you for reminding me to not skip that step. Appreciate that. Okay, if we have no Commissioner reports, is that correct? We have no Commissioner reports? Okay, staff comments.
Good evening, Commissioner. Welcome to today's meeting. Just a couple of staff comments today. Puget Sound Regional Council and the Washington State Department of Commerce are hosting a virtual passport to 2044. That is the name of the series that they have for educational sessions and guidance for this periodic update process. There's a wealth of great information within that, both written and webinars and such that they're providing. So there's one that is targeted specifically for planning commissioners and city council members around the region, and it's going to be held Thursday, May 18th, from 12 to 1:30, to learn more about the importance of comprehensive plan periodic updates and key issues emerging during the process. It will be online, if you have time to make it. Sounds like it'll be a good session. If not, I think we're covering many of the same issues here, and I think staff will try to attend and make sure that anything that does come in there gets passed along your way. But always nice to have a change of scenery in terms of speakers and see a different perspective on it, and also hear some of the questions that may come up from some of your colleagues in other cities and counties around the region wrestling with similar issues. So I will send out that invite in email, and there's a registration link there as well. May 18th, 12 to 1:30. Wanted to talk a little bit about state legislation. We are nearing the end of the legislative session and have been watching a number of bills throughout this session since January with, with rapt attention, and I think we're finally at the point now where the decisions have all been made. There are a couple of governor's signatures to be made, but no indications that any of these bills would be at risk. So there are four that I will talk briefly about now: accessory dwelling units, middle housing, climate, and resiliency, and condominiums under 12 units. I'll start with accessory dwelling units. House Bill 1337 passed the legislature a few days ago, and it requires that for cities like Everett, I could summarize it like this: it's almost exactly what our accessory dwelling unit ordinance is. Prohibits owner occupancy. It requires that a city allow at least two accessory dwelling units that are located in lots that allow for single-family homes. Those could be attached, detached, or any combination thereof. On any lot that meets minimum lot size, the roof height limit needs to be at least 24 feet. Our lowest height limit is 28 feet, so we meet that already. May not, a city may not impose setback requirements, lot coverage limits, et cetera, that are more restrictive than those for principal units. City may not require off-street parking within one-half-mile walking distance of a major transit stop, and may not require even outside of that distance more than one off-street space per unit on lots smaller than 6,000 square feet or more than two on lots greater than 6,000 square feet. And there are some other details, but in general, a lot of those things probably sound familiar to you. They are eerily similar to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance that was recommended out of this body a few months ago. There's, the deadline for implementation of it isn't for a couple of years, but I think the plan would be that we might be the first city in the state to adopt an ordinance consistent with that. One of the reasons that it hasn't made its way to the city council yet is that we knew that this bill was moving along within, in the legislature and wanted to see what it, how it turned out. So I think you can expect to see that getting going soon. We're also working right now with the city council on the housing development incentives, ordinances. That was briefed, sorry, brief segue into related legislation that was briefed before the city council's new built environment committee last week. Becky, Jennifer, and our consultant Peter Bacciello briefed the committee on that, and it's going for a second reading at city council tomorrow evening, followed by a public hearing on May 3rd and potential city council action on multifamily tax exemption and the fee waivers ordinances. That was another reason that we had to finish that one up for a grant deliverable deadline, and so that got in the way of the ADU ordinance at the city council. Prohibition on requiring owner occupancy. Yes. I'm sorry. We're so used to talking about these policy things that I shortcutted that one a little bit. Okay, middle housing, more impactful, even so, than the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. This is House Bill, engrossed second substitute, House Bill 1110. This passed the legislature today, I believe. So again, still, it went through all of its steps, including concurrence between the two chambers, and the last step would be approval by the governor, which again, I don't see as, as a risk. Now, this has two paths that we can take, and this is going to be impactful to our comprehensive plan update process. Either a city over 75,000 people, like Everett, must require at least the, allow the development of at least four units per lot on all lots zoned predominantly for residential use, and six units per lot within a quarter-mile walking distance of a major transit stop, and those are rail stations and bus rapid transit stops. And, and with, with that number of units, so either four or six within proximity to major transit stops, the city must allow at least six of the nine types of middle housing: duplex, triplex, fourplex, fiveplex, sixplex, townhouse, stacked flat, courtyard apartment, and cottages. The city may only adopt objective development and design standards, may not require standards for middle housing that are more restrictive than those required for detached, single-family residences, shall not require off-street parking as a condition of permitting development of middle housing within a half-mile walking distance of a major transit stop, shall otherwise not require more than one off-street parking space per unit on lots smaller than 6,000 square feet, or two on lots larger than 6,000 square feet. Exceptions include lots designated with critical areas or their buffers. And this is due six months after the next periodic comprehensive plan update, so that would be six months after, would it be June of 2025? But we need capacity, as we talked at length about in the last meeting, we need capacity for this periodic update, so I think it makes sense to fold these requirements into this update and not do one and then immediately turn around and start working on this ordinance. So that was path one. Path two is that you can apply those density requirements to at least 75% of lots that are primarily dedicated to single-family detached housing units. So in other words, you can exclude up to a quarter of the lots in the city from those requirements that I just mentioned. None of, none of the areas excluded, excuse me, how do I say this? The 25% that could be excluded must include, if you go this route, areas for which there is a significant risk of displacement or lack of infrastructure capacity, designated with critical areas of their buffers, subject to sea level rise. The lots excluded from allowing middle housing may not include areas for which the exclusion would further racially disparate impacts or result in zoning with a discriminatory effect, and that would connect to the work that we're doing with the comprehensive plan update on analyzing racially disparate impacts and discriminatory zoning. May not include areas within a half-mile walking distance of a major transit stop or community amenity. I just read that for the first time, okay? Any areas historically covered by a covenant or deed restriction excluding racial minorities from owning property or living in the area. So we know that a number of subdivisions and plats in Everett and many other cities historically had excluded racial minorities and others from living in the area. Some of those restrictions remain on the plat face, although they are unenforceable. Plats that have those on them may not be excluded from this middle housing requirement, even under path two. And then areas within a half-mile walking distance of a building, shopping center, or business area containing at least 100,000 square feet of retail space. There should be grants, model code, and technical assistance coming from the state to support this work, and I believe the deadline is the same as accessory dwelling units, six months after the periodic update deadline. That's a big deal for the city of Everett.
Quick question regarding the number of units. Was there an affordable housing component to that?
There, yes, there was one route. It was, let's see. So four units per lot on all lots, or six units within a quarter mile, and I believe everywhere in the city, you could be allowed six units per lot if at least two units are affordable housing, which I believe is reserved for a 50-year period to, I'm not sure which affordability category. I didn't mention that one because I wasn't quite sure how often that would work out for an affordable housing development at a scale as small as a six-unit development for the administrative work and all that, but I hope to be proven wrong on that piece.
And if there's wraparound, thank you, if there's wraparound services for that, you know, when you start talking about higher AMIs or workforce housing that could be affordable housing, it becomes a lot more viable, I would guess.
Right, yeah. And I guess you would put a covenant on the property restricting its use, and then it's the reporting requirements, and I'm just, maybe my mindset is in the multifamily tax exemption, which is a pretty sizable administrative structure that goes along with that, and I guess I just don't, this is so fresh, just a couple of days ago, I haven't fully thought through all of the implications of it, but thank you for mentioning that, Chair. So this appears to mean that, for one, accessory dwelling units, as proposed in the ordinance, are a foregone conclusion in Everett. It also appears to mean that for large swaths of Everett, middle housing is also a foregone conclusion at those, those levels that we, that I just mentioned. There is the route that could exclude certain parts of the city, and I think it may make sense to do so for some areas. We'll definitely have to have some conversations about that. But none of that, within the central swath of the city, a half-mile walking distance, which make sure, if you're thinking about it in your head or going to Google Maps to draw a half-mile circle, walking distance is going to be a diamond usually that's a little bit smaller than that circle, but it's going to cover a large swath of the city. That is our alternative three in our, the alternatives that we walked through last month. This now seems to indicate that alternatives one and two, neither of which are going to be actually legal if they were adopted in their form. We're going to have to think through the implications of that. I think we continue as we're going. It's still, they still count as reasonable alternatives. They provide important information on different paths, and I don't think they have to be necessarily fully consistent, and even so, there's a different deadline in here that could allow us kind of an out there. But again, this is brand new, and I'd ask you to help us think through that over the coming months.
And just as a refresher, alternative one was the consolidated?
Alternative one was current plans extended, so existing capacity and accessory dwelling units and placeholder stationary plans for light rail. Otherwise, no changes. And then alternative two concentrated was, well, we'll talk about it a little bit later on today.
And then alternative three was Houston.
Alternative three was middle housing.
Yeah.
Not familiar enough with, I know the, the short version of what Houston is, but I imagine there's more to the story than we know.
Maybe more of a Paris, you know, not too tall, everywhere about the same height?
I guess one point I do want to make is that there is a lot of discretion remaining and a lot of work for us to do on how. So it is, appears to be a foregone conclusion that large swaths of the city will have to be required to accommodate middle housing and accessory dwelling units. There is still a big question, and I think this is our job, is to make that as positive of an addition to the city as possible. So I don't know that, other than consistency with, or no more restrictive than for single-family dwellings, heights and setbacks and design requirements, as long as they're objective, and all of those sorts of things remain on the table. So these can be shaped and even tailored to individual neighborhoods. You'll see when we get to the planning commission calendar that we're planning on looking at middle housing specifically over the next two months with you, and that is not just because of this bill, but because, if you remember, we have the middle housing grant-funded work program, and that comes to a conclusion at the end of June. So the next two meetings are the next two meetings that we have before June. And so that's when we will get into a lot of that. What are the potential displacement implications of middle housing? What have we heard from our outreach around middle housing? What are some of the design standards and bulk regulations that can complement middle housing? And then I guess we should think about which path to take.
I know you mentioned that you had just read the element of the community amenity being a factor.
Yeah.
Do you know what, what that definition, do you have kind of a loose idea of what that, that might be pointing to?
I don't see it in the list of definitions. I would imagine that the Department of Commerce might make a rule, might start with, with just a guidance document and a model code that would flesh that out, but for now, it's probably up to the reader. That could be a lot of things. Probably, yes, probably Commerce will give guidance on that, but, but otherwise, we would be free to make reasonable use of that term. Okay, those were, those were, I think, the most directly and immediately impactful ones. There's also, I think, very important for the state, a climate and resiliency bill. Let me see if I can get the bill number. House Bill 1181, that has also passed the legislature. That requires a climate change and resiliency element to the comprehensive plan. It has requirements for transportation. It has requirements for state and regional planning organizations. It has requirements for resilience that are more focused on rural and wildland, urban interface and fire hazard type areas. There are two sub-elements required: a greenhouse gas reduction sub-element and a resiliency sub-element. I didn't put this in the highest category of impact because we have a climate change and sustainability element, and we have a climate action plan, and I think between the two of those things, we probably address many of the requirements in this bill. Doesn't mean that we shouldn't take this opportunity to review all of those and, and see where there are some gaps or where there's some improvements that can be made. I think the transportation element is likely to be impacted by this a little bit, and, and then I think building and energy, building energy use is probably the other area where, where our work has most impact on climate mitigation. That's a long one. It's like 50 pages. I have read it, but that's, that's probably a fair enough summary for now. Other folks around the state will probably try their hand at summarizing these, and we'll see if it makes more sense for us to give a more thorough summary and a full presentation on these next month, or use what others come up with in terms of those summaries. The last one is Senate Bill 5058. This is, I only briefly looked at this. It applies to less than 12 units, and it mentions that a building with 12 or fewer units that is no more than two stories does not, shoot, where'd that go? Does not qualify as a residential, multi-unit residential building, which I believe has a connection to condos and the waterproofing issue and the liability issue. Not something I'm obviously an expert on, but I believe it's the type of thing that should help with smaller condominiums, which is very valuable, I think, for us. So more to come on that one. Yeah, building enclosure design documents. I remember this is something that was a fix for the liability issue. Building enclosure would be the waterproofing membrane and all that, and might make it just a little bit easier to either build or convert smaller buildings into condominiums, which is good for our homeownership goals. Was going to give an update at the end of the last meeting. Commissioner Atkins and a couple others talked about home occupations and front yard businesses and all that. Commissioner Atkins wasn't able to make the meeting today, so if it's okay, I think we'll kick that update to the next meeting so that everybody can be involved in that one, which wraps up the end of staff comments. Thank you.
Okay, we have an opportunity for public comment. Doesn't look like we have anyone here in person. Ayana, do we have anyone online?
We do. If caller ending in triple oh seven, that's 0007, would like to make a comment, please press star nine.
Star six.
Star six. No comment.
Okay, this first item is the planning commission calendar. So I'm going to start with a little bit of an overview of the components of a comprehensive plan. This piggybacks on some of the handouts that were included in your packet. There was a guide to the periodic update process under the Growth Management Act. This is a very helpful guide for the Department of Commerce. You must have noticed that it applies to everything from rural counties to cities, so not all of it is directly applicable to Everett, but the parts that are, I think, are presented clearly. And then behind that was a, the checklist for, for city comprehensive plans. It was very long, but it was a small amount of text on each page, just with the formatting. We don't expect you to fill out that checklist, although we will be filling out that checklist and already have been working on it, and it is an early deliverable to the Department of Commerce. So we're going to walk through a little bit of, I suppose I'd call it, how to write a comprehensive plan, or what the requirements are for a comprehensive plan, and then Becky will apply that to the 18 or so months that we have between now and when we need to hand off a recommended full plan set to the city council for their review consideration and ultimately adoption. I handed out to your places excerpts from the Washington Administrative Code. The Washington Administrative Code is regulations by departments of the state. In this case, the Department of Commerce. They interpret law and they add substantive and procedural requirements of their own, as well as recommendations. I really like the WAC, and this was actually all been freshly updated by the Department of Commerce. It was a multi-year period, and this doesn't happen very often because it's a very involved effort involving lots of public comment and, and process, as you can imagine, at the state level. They just wrapped this up. I was looking through some old planning commission packets, and I had given you a version of this when it was still draft and under development about a year ago, so all of this is done now. My favorite part about the WAC is that it is written for humans, not lawyers. No offense. The law is very important, and it evolves over time, and sometimes the wording can get very tortured. The WAC takes its opportunity to make that more readable, understandable, and organized. And so I pulled out, out of the dozens of sections that are within the Growth Management Act section of the, of the WAC, these are the ones that seemed most applicable to our work. Carefully curated section here, covers all of the required and optional elements, as well as a couple of important pieces like implementation strategy and the relationship of development regulations and comprehensive plans, as well as the background on the Growth Management Act itself. So I would say between, at least at a state level, between the guidebook, the checklist, and the WAC, this is about all anyone would need in terms of tools to know what the state requirements are for a comprehensive plan. Add to that, we have regional requirements with FISION 2050 and countywide planning policies and whatever we want to do our own self, but at least from a state level, this just about covers it, I think. So this slide you see here, statutory requirements. We have seen this slide before. As you know, we're extending the planning horizon to 2044. We must respond to new state laws that were adopted since the last periodic update, which was completed in 2015. Ironically, it doesn't include these new laws that I just mentioned that passed the legislature today because those take effect just, or required just after this periodic update, but I think it makes sense for us to consider those as essentially part of that package of laws that need to be caught up, our plan caught up with. Consistency with multi-county planning policies and the regional growth strategy and countywide planning policies is required, must all be underpinned by a robust public participation program, and, and supported by environmental review under the State Environmental Policy Act. A reminder of the participants in the process. It all starts and ends with the public, and we had a, a meeting on our public participation program not too long ago, and the word "public," I think, is, we use that broadly. That includes businesses and organizations and residents and visitors and everybody who has an interest in Everett. Agencies typically have a special responsibility because they share oversight over some parts of the public sphere, and agencies include folks like Snohomish County and Snohomish County Public Utility District, PUD, the Port of Everett, U.S. Navy, and other such agencies, Everett Housing Authority, school districts, and many, many others. Tulalip tribes and other tribes with an interest in, in Everett. City staff, of course, is here to support all of this work and offer our recommendations. City staff, of course, is here to support all of this work and offer our recommendations on it. Planning Commission will be asked to, well, you'll be doing a lot of work on this over the next 18 months, and then you'll be asked to make a formal recommendation to the City Council on a product. And then the City Council is the legislative authority, is the final word, on the comprehensive Components of the plan, so what is the plan itself? Hopefully, you've all had a chance to peruse our existing plan, and it's more or less includes all of these components arranged in different ways within the different elements. But you need to include some background about the city, so existing conditions and inventories, who is it that lives in Everett now, what are the types of jobs and businesses that are here, what are the roads that we have, where are the water pipes, what are the electrical lines and all of that sort of things. You need to know what you have at the beginning of the process to know where you're going. Forecasts and models, we've got travel demand forecasts are probably the most obvious version of that, but there's also employment forecasts and water supply forecasts and other, and other things like that. A land capacity analysis, we spent a lot of time talking about that at last month's meeting, that is related to our housing and employment growth targets. Fiscal forecasts, because an important piece of growth management is capital facility planning and making sure that we have the right public facilities for the population and employment that we are planning for. And to get those public facilities, you need money, and so we'll have a forecast of generally reasonably expected public funds that would go to support things like transportation and other capital facilities. It's really focused on the capital facilities and not so much the operating budget of the city. And then the environmental impact statement, we'll use that term, I'll just say environmental impact statement, but it is likely to be, there will be a draft and supplemental environmental impact statement, a final environmental impact statement, maybe some other supplementals and revised in there. But all of them, you could call just the environmental impact statement, which is the analysis of what the implications of the policy directions that we go and what that will do to the city and different aspects of the environment. Then what is the plan? The plan must include a vision of Everett in 2044, so what, what do we see as the end state, at least for this planning period? What does Everett look like in 2044? That'll be a fun exercise that we'll kind of build in along the way as we go. Sometimes planning efforts start with that. It's really hard to do as a, as a first thing. I hope you're all kind of have that in your mind throughout this entire process, but we didn't anticipate starting with a big visioning exercise. I guess, as I say that, remember that we have recently done a couple of visioning exercises, maybe not so recently, maybe in the 2010s. There was a project called Envision Everett that took a look at what is a long-term vision for Everett, and then the existing comprehensive plan has a vision statement as well. Descriptive text and graphics, so that's just all the words and the graphics that explain in, in kind of general terms what the plan is. And then we have numbered goals, objectives, and policies that have a little bit more weight to them, not to say that the descriptive text doesn't form part of the plan, but those goals, objectives, and policies, by the way, that they're highlighted, are very clearly directive on the implementation aspects of the plan, which I'll get to in a moment. A future land use map specifically, and that's what guides the zoning map and the other similar maps, like the building height map and the street designations and all of that. So, a future land use map, what is gonna go where? And then there are other maps, like the transportation maps, what's our future transportation network look like, our bicycle network, our roadway network, and those sorts of things. A financial plan, usually it's required with a fairly high degree of, relatively high degree of accuracy for six years, and then a lot looser for the 20 years. Obviously, it's hard to know even what next year's economic conditions will bring and what the fiscal environment will be. Much harder to know in 2043 how much money we'll have for capital facilities, but this is a plan, and we do need to know that as an input, and we do need to have a plan. That can also include a need for additional revenues, we don't want to lead too heavily on that, but it's a pretty common feature for plans to realize that we don't seem to have enough money to do all the things that we want to do. If we make that finding, we should have a plan for, a clear plan for how we're gonna get that money. That doesn't mean that it's gonna be guaranteed, because a lot of financial tools require voter approval, which is always an open question until the election happens, but we should have at least a roadmap. And then actions would be, new in this cycle for comprehensive plans is an implementation progress report that is due to the state five years after the periodic update, so that'd be in 2029. There are pieces of this plan that might be important for the plan that we don't quite get to. I think I mentioned this last time, that in general, the regulations that implement the plan need to be in place the day the plan is adopted. So, if we have, setting aside the middle housing bill, if we have a future land use map that says we're gonna allow middle housing in this area, we need to have the development regulations in place at the same time to allow middle housing in that area. There can be some things, this is a lot of work that we've got, there can be some things that will be next year's, not next year, but the year after the periodic update, or in that five-year implementation plan. They're gonna be called out as specific actions, and there's gonna be accountability that we actually get to them, because I think another frequent feature is to have a whole bunch of nice stuff that we're gonna do, and then it constantly rolls over to the next one, and people are wondering, well, how come I never see the world that is described in this comprehensive plan? These are the elements of the plan. I think our current plan calls them chapters, same, same thing. These are spelled out in the WAC right here, and each one of them have specific requirements, and this is gonna be the backbone of the, the calendar that we're gonna walk through in a moment. So, for example, we can flip through the WAC really quick. On page five, you can see up top the requirements that you have a future land use map and descriptive text. One, one thing to mention with the, with the WAC is, you'll almost always see two sections, requirements and recommendations. Requirements is usually pretty close to verbatim out of state law and out of the RCW, and recommendations is what is recommended by the Department of Commerce. We should follow the recommendations whenever, unless there's a really good reason not to. You can see at the bottom of page five, under E, the comprehensive plan should include a vision for the community at the end of the 20-year planning period. Land use element on page seven, general distribution and general location and extent of the uses of land for housing, commerce, industry, recreation, open spaces, public utilities, public facilities, airports, military bases, and other land use, I skipped the county stuff. Existing or potential open space corridors. Quantities of land needed for public purposes, such as utility corridors, landfills, solid waste transfer stations, sewage treatment facilities, stormwater management facilities, recreation, schools, and other public uses. Page nine, K, an implementation strategy and a schedule for phasing of planned development, so we can phase certain aspects of this, and I'm thinking mostly around the light rail stations. Shoreline is a good example of where they had zoning that was supportive of the light rail stations, but it didn't make sense to actually unlock that potential until it was a little closer to station opening. So, they pre-built in a timeline, and they said, you have a, you know, it's, it's a single-family only, but then in 2023, on December, it'll automatically, without any action by the council, it will allow townhouses, or something like that. So, that's the land use element. The housing element requires an inventory and analysis of existing and projected housing needs, goals, policies, objectives, and identification of sufficient land for housing, including government-assisted housing, housing for low-income families, manufactured housing, multifamily housing, group homes, and foster care facilities, as well as adequate provisions for existing and projected housing needs of all economic segments of the community. This should all sound familiar from last month's meeting. On page 15, the capital facilities element require an inventory of existing capital facilities, a forecast of future needs for such capital facilities based on the land use element, the proposed locations and capacities of expanded or new capital facilities, and that six-year plan that will finance such capital facilities, and clearly identify sources of public money for such purposes. On page 18, we've got the utilities element, general location, proposed locations and capacity of all existing and proposed utilities. Some of those are provided by the city, water and sewer, some of those are provided by other entities, electricity, telecommunications, and gas, for instance. I wanted to highlight electricity specifically, we're in a time, as you all know, of rapid electrification, and PUD has a big job ahead of them to support that electrification of the transportation system and everything else. Big job is an understatement there. We will likely need a few more substations in the city, we will likely need some different transmission corridors and facilities, and we'll bring PUD here, can't remember where it is on the schedule, to come walk us through. I've been learning, and Becky, we've been learning a lot about power lines and voltages and things like that. That's gonna be an important part of this periodic update, more so than anyone in the The transportation element, one of the most impactful and closely watched and important of all the elements, after the land use and housing elements probably. Require land use assumptions used in estimating travel, pull that from the land use element. Estimated impacts to state-owned transportation facilities, and then facility and service needs at, across all of the different modes. And then, an analysis of funding capability and a multi-year financing plan that will serve as the basis for the rotating six-year transportation improvement program that you see each year. Intergovernmental coordination efforts, demand management strategies, and a pedestrian, specifically a pedestrian and bicycle component, which I believe has been now renamed the active transportation component under the climate bill. On page 29, we've got the economic development element, which should include a summary of the local economy, the strength and its strengths and weaknesses, and an identification of policies, programs, and projects to foster economic growth and development and to address future needs. That should be a very interesting discussion. The parks and recreation element, you were steeped in that just a year and a half ago, I think it was. We just, luckily, of all of these, we've just taken a completely fresh look at our parks and recreation element. We will need to take another look for, I guess, its first update, a year and a half into it, look at the capital facilities list, and some have been completed and some might be added to it, and financing and all of that, so it'll be more of a limited refresh than the other elements. Optional elements, we currently have a marine port element that we can refresh and continue, we can fold it into another element, we're gonna work with the port on, on what they would like to see out of that. Urban design and historic resources, urban design does not appear anywhere in the WAC as far as I know. I think it's great value add to the city, but I, but it's, maybe otherwise it could be folded into the land use element or something. But, yeah, I think it's a great one. Historic resources, though, is listed as a recommended element, and that guides our historic preservation program, and you can see on page 35 some guidance on the historic preservation program. And then the last couple of these are land use compatibility with airports, ports, and military installations that will overlay on top of the other elements, critical areas and implementation strategies. So, that was just kind of a walkthrough, all of the work that we're gonna do over the next 18 months. You did not hear me mention the word equity in any of that, and that is on purpose because, and it's not gonna appear on this list either. We're gonna look at every single one of these things through an equity lens, which means, what is the populations, what are the populations of the city, and how do the impacts, both positive and negative, of everything that we do in each one of these elements fall on those populations, and how do we ensure that that is, both the positives and the negatives are distributed equitably? And of course, there's a big component to the public participation program, as we've mentioned earlier. Oh, shoot, there's one more slide. This plan then is implemented through these four bullets. These are not part of the comprehensive plan, but they must be consistent with, supportive of, and they must implement the comprehensive plan, and that is the development regulations, generally in Title 19 of Everett Municipal Code. Capital improvement programs, we have a whole, that's typically done through the city's budget process, our six-year transportation improvement program and the capital improvement program. But the comprehensive plan, those, those top two, I guess, transportation is a form of a capital improvement program, is really how the comprehensive plan hits the road. We've got the development regulations, and we've got our capital facilities planning. And then other city actions, sometimes we guide the work of city government with the comprehensive plan, sometimes we don't. Sometimes, I think we want to right-size that a little bit with our plan, there's a lot of places where the plan suggests that a certain way to operate the city, and it's a little bit cumbersome, and I, and, and we don't necessarily get there, and I think we need to be a little bit more nimble than that. So, I think we should be cautious about overstepping the authority of the comprehensive plan more than necessary. We can guide our own work as a, as a municipal government as much as we want, it's not a core part of comprehensive planning, really it is the development regulations and the capital facilities, but we can use this as, as, as we want as a city. That's that other city actions bullet. I think, so this is where we'll turn to Becky to take all of that pile of stuff, so those, I think, I mentioned, these are the three documents, those slides basically in a nutshell are all the pieces, and now we'll tumble all of those together and try to put it into a general schedule and sequence.
Questions on the work presented? So, we had a chance to take a look at the long-term schedule, and we want to make sure that, one, it all fits there, if there's something missing, that's something we'd like to hear from you as well. This is a calendar that's really intended to help us move through the projects. We're going to take them primarily by the elements. The land use element is pretty large, so we'll probably break that up. But otherwise, we try to put the schedule down so that we paired things that were maybe similar, so that it was easier to understand and make the connection. But I will say that all of the elements of the comp plan relate to each other, so internal consistency is another thing that we'll be taking a look at through this process. What was the other thing? We, we know there's some other things that'll come on your calendar throughout the year, but we, this calendar just focuses on the comprehensive plan. So, Yorick mentioned already that, starting next month, we're going to bring the middle housing work to you. That has been work, being worked on since about fall of last year when we got the final grant. We'll talk about that grant work and what it entailed, and then you saw those housing types that the bill describes, so we'll talk to you about definitions and what we've been working on, and then maybe have a bigger response and related to what the recent legislation implications are, and then what the role in the alternatives might be. So, I don't think we have anything else planned, because I think that's a meaty subject for you all, and so we'll look forward to that. In June, we'd like to follow up on any middle housing questions that you might have or any additional information. Our obligation in the grant is not to have an ordinance passed, but to have a draft ordinance prepared, so that's the end product that we will have, it could change after that, but that we kind of have a way to go forward. As I As I should have said in the beginning, the schedule may change. This is very fluid. We've got a lot of other staff members that are part of this, and so we're doing our best to get folks scheduled. But already, we have a change in June because the economic development director won't be here, so we'll probably switch some things around. But when we do bring Dan and have the discussion, we will go ahead and pair that with our land use element, all of the non-residential pieces of the land use element. So that'll give us a chance to talk more in-depth on employment data, on talking about sectors and the amount of space that we need. If you might recall, both, all three alternatives basically say we're going to accommodate the employment in the same area that we have today for employment. So we'll talk about that. We'll talk about commerce or retail. And then the other thing we want to discuss would be the commercial displacement. That's probably more related to the light rail stuff, but nonetheless, we want to explore that topic. Some of the special topics under the land use element that's related to non-residential would be, as Yorick mentioned, the marine port element, our airport compatibility, and military installation compatibility issues. We've heard this a number of times, so I did call this particular subject out, and I'm sure we'll add to this list, the ground floor retail requirement that we have. We have heard a number of comments about that since Rethink Zoning, so it's, this is the opportunity to revisit that. And like I said, I think there's probably going to be other special topics that come up as we move along. And I did list some of the other land use topics that are, you'll see them in the checklist that we need to address, and that's centers. We've got two of them, the Regional Growth Center, which is basically Metro Everett, and the Manufacturing and Industrial Center, which is the, do we call it the Boeing MIC or the Southwest Industrial MIC? Yeah. Where Boeing is. So that, again, that'll be a meeting that will probably be fairly long. We also have an opportunity to add a meeting the first Tuesday of every month, should we, A, get behind, or B, we feel like we need a more in-depth time to discuss a certain subject. We'll still try to keep it to the one month, once a month, but that's our backup, so to speak. So in July, we are getting ready to, on Friday, should everything go okay with the notice, we would be doing a call for applications. So this is an opportunity for members of the community, say, property owners that would like to have us consider changing their property to a higher density, to a different use. So this is an opportunity for them to make an application, to make their case. They could also request some text changes in the comprehensive plan, as well as development regulations and/or zoning changes. So we will have about a five-week period for them to respond, and then you'll see, as I move the calendar forward, we will be bringing this to you, just like we do the docket process, where we'll bring you a list, we'll give you the staff's recommendation on whether or not we think these should move forward. You'll have your discussion, and then you'll make a recommendation to council, and they'll have an opportunity to look at what comes in from the community. So we're back to housing. That probably will move to, will switch to June and July, but not only do we have the middle housing, we have a housing action plan, but we've got the housing element, and it's a pretty long element. There's several goals and policies, and we feel like this is a chance to really make it a cohesive element in the comprehensive plan that really connects all of those pieces. So we've shared a lot of housing data, but we will definitely be giving you some more. There's census data that has come out. So we'll talk about those types of data, housing types. We want to share with you some of the model code, sound transit model code work. A lot of that has to do with housing and residential, and this is where you'll see a requirement for us to evaluate the racially disparate impacts through an analysis, and we'll do this in the context of residential displacement. So we'll take on the residential pieces of the land use element, and that also includes the reasonable measures that we're required to do because we currently don't have the capacity, to me, our 2035 targets. So this is probably not your favorite thing to see here because I'm showing two meetings in August, and that's usually summertime and folks are on and off vacation. But for now, we have that, this will be when we take the specific amendment request to you, the list, and have you take a look at that. So we'll give you a couple of meetings. We'll brief you, and then the following meeting will ask for a recommendation. We'll have the housing element on there again, should we not get through it the previous meeting. So some of these elements, we know, are going to take a little bit longer than others. And then in August, besides the amendment requests, we want to take a look and tackle the urban design and historic resources. One of the things that's come up, again, both from the historic commission, because we've shared those policies with them, and they'll be able to, they'll be doing some work to share with you all, is to include more about cultural resources. There, it's more heavy on the historic than the culture at this point, so this could be an opportunity to bring more of that in. Through September, we will get to the transportation elements. That's also a very large piece of the comprehensive plan. There is a consultant that will be working with the city on that because it is a complex issue. We will then start to be bringing some more of the code amendments that we've identified through the goals, policies, and objectives review work that we feel will need to be implemented to bring the comprehensive plan into compliance. We also think that some of those potential code amendments, special topics might include, we have a number of Rethink Zoning code amendments that have been identified. We've brought a couple of them to you. We think there might be an opportunity to bring at least a bigger package to you, or all of it. We'll have to see how that works out, but bring some of those forward to you. Critical areas has to be updated per state law, but we have been given some extra time, a year, following the adoption of this plan. So we may take that extra time to do the critical areas and not have, be it part of this package, but we'll let you know. October, again, another transportation element, should we, reviews if we need it, and we'll hopefully be talking about transit and non-motorized transportation. I think, you know, we've met with Public Works, and they feel excited about this update and just, you know, trying to get more of their work done through this process. Light rail, monocle, go ahead.
Just mentioned that there are other boards and commissions, and the transportation, made me think of that. We have a transportation advisory commission. Maybe we'll have a joint meeting, maybe some combination of that. There's obviously the historical commission, and there's others where we kind of share topics.
And October would be another meeting where we bring forward capital facilities and utilities element. So the other things besides utilities in that element are fire, police, the library, the parks, the schools, and other services that the city provides, making sure that we would be right-sized for providing those necessary facilities. Utilities, the water, sewer power, natural gas, telecommunications. And then the one thing that we'll be talking about is essential public facilities. Those are hard-to-sight facilities, so to speak, such as your jails, your large facilities, and there is a section in our comprehensive plan that talks about essential public facilities, but we, so we may need to think about that in terms of the light rail and where that fits in, is that's considered a essential public facility. So in November, we are asking for the meeting to be the first Tuesday because the third Tuesday is the week of Thanksgiving, so that's something for you to consider. November would be your capital facilities, and we would actually be talking with finance to let them tell you how they're approaching the work on the capital facilities plan. Financing, parks and rec element, I think we feel like you've been through it already last year, that we won't need a lot of extra time. I think in that update, they used, they used our growth numbers from 2044, if I'm not mistaken. So they're kind of ahead in that regard. There's the climate change and sustainability element, and then at that point, we hope to be able to start reviewing some of the environmental impact statement with you, and start reviewing some of the work that we've done and how we're seeing the impacts coming through. So I listed there in the schedule all of the elements of an EIS, things that we'll I know this is a two-year schedule. Climate change and sustainability element, should we need it? Again, asking for the third Tuesday in December to be changed to the first, and those two on December would just be follow-ons. Moving into 2024 is where we're starting to develop the plan, so we'll bring the financing piece probably in January. I did have it back here in November, but that's probably a busy time for them, just for city budget purposes. But we're going to start to be seeing final documents, or, excuse me, final draft documents that are going to be moving forward. We're going to ask for you to hold an environmental impact statement, public hearing, to hear from the community. And then we want to go from there to working with you in a workshop-type format on a preferred alternative. And that will help us then to start to finalize the documents. We also want to be able to go through some, in April, their development regulations So I will go up to May, which is the, again, we would lay out the preferred alternative review in a way you would still have some input back. We would be bringing the draft land capacity analysis that we're required to have, the adequate provisions for housing analysis, which is that showing how we meet our income brackets, housing for our income brackets, which is also required. And then in June would really begin the full package, and we would start the formal adoption process. So we've got a couple of introduction meetings, should you need that, and then a briefing, what we'd call a formal briefing, in August with final ordinances or final draft ordinances, I should say. And then you would hold a public hearing. We've got an extra date for another public hearing, should you need it, and potentially you would be able to get through a recommendation. So an iterative process that we hope to work with you, and by the time we get to the introduction, there's no surprises for you, you've seen it all. And then that would be the time, hopefully in October, that we would, you would forward your recommendation to the council, and then maybe cancel the rest of the year.
Can you, on the preferred alternative workshop, is that, use the term workshop, are we doing something different? And then can you kind of explain how we work with you on the decision to choose the final?
Yeah, that's a really good question, and I would have to say that I think we need to work on what that would look like. In terms of the workshop, Yorick and I haven't exactly ironed that out yet, but, you know, maybe it could be a roundtable workshop format. It's something that I think is helpful, that when you can have that workshop environment to talk through, still be recorded as a meeting, so we'll think about that.
Yeah, I would just say, happy to take your thoughts and innovation on all of that. It doesn't always have to be this format. I think we could even, I was going to say, we could even do like a retreat or something that's like a larger meeting if there's a particularly long topic, or we want to drive to the preferred alternative, and it helps to take a half-day or something, or like Becky said, working around tables or something. So think and suggest, and we will do the same.
Commissioner Slitsky.
I'm just wondering if you anticipate using a consultant in any of this, either for the environmental review or even for the development of the preferred alternative?
Potentially. Potentially.
Yeah, I think especially for the environmental review, and we're working hard on exactly that. We have some budget from the state, and we put a good chunk of that towards the public participation effort, and bringing Alberto onto the team to help make that as robust as possible. There are definitely some technical disciplines that are very important and impactful that we would want to bring into that. Yes, so we're working hard.
Sometimes it's helpful to have the consultant, have a consultant who can help lead a workshop kind of format, too.
Yeah.
Right.
Good suggestion.
Yeah, there's a hundred different ways to do it. We're probably not doing, you know, sometimes consultants do the entire comprehensive plan update. We don't have the budget for that, and I think we're in a pretty good place with that. But whether it's specific disciplines or facilitation or things like that, it's, yes. We'll try to get as much support for you, and again, share with us ideas that you have or where you think you could use a little bit more analytical firepower.
Yeah, I think that's a really, really good suggestion, particularly with elements where there are other commissions that maybe handle that work. Maybe that's an opportunity to work collaboratively, have a collaborative work session, and maybe not necessarily a whole retreat if we don't need a four, five-hour block of time, but if there's an opportunity to do that, maybe we can make it happen.
Just remembered, we are definitely have a consultant for the transportation element, working on a, working on a scope with them. Public Works is leading that effort, and we'll be closely partnering with them throughout that. But that's one of those technical, complicated, and impactful disciplines where we could use that support.
I just listed a few of the items we know outside the comp plan there in the end of that table that will likely be coming to you over the next year.
Well, I will go, but Baker Heights, PDO, I see that as your final topic there. Has it been decided that they will be granted a overlay and that they will be pursuing the tallest building in the city in a residential neighborhood north of downtown? Has that been decided?
They, they have to apply for the plan development overlay, and that is similar to a rezone type of action. So it'll actually come before the commission for a recommendation to the council, and the council would make the final decision, so.
I see. So that is basically in response to an anticipated application?
Correct.
Okay. I just would hate to see them get too far down the road, or it be a foregone conclusion, because I think that... because I think that, as, as previously presented to us, it needed some help.
And I, from status updates and briefings that I'm going to try to pull up to schedule to see if they're going to be coming to you for another briefing, but the general thrust that they presented last time they were here remains the general thrust of the, they've refined the design alternative, they're working into a environmental impact statement process, so just like our comprehensive plan, they have design alternatives and a no-action alternative that they will analyze throughout the whole range of, in aspects of the environment. But yes, they continue to seek a mixed-use, heavy on the residential side, but including community space, retail, parks, couldn't call it the park district without some park and open space, view corridors, and roughly 1,500 units was the number before, and I think it's still generally in that area. And I see, I see Planning Commission in April.
I have it for May.
It must have moved to May.
They may be coming to you next month with another briefing.
Just briefing, yeah. But yes, there is no plan development overlay without a recommendation from the Planning Commission and a decision by the City Council.
Oh, I know you mentioned that we did, equity will be measured in all this and analyzed in all of this as we move forward. Will we also have ways to kind of anticipate and think about the economic impacts of each of these? I know they're specifically listed for middle housing, but, you know, as we talk about transit, you know, I always, basically goes back to, is this land being used that's most efficient and effective and revenue generating potential? And will we have that, will we have that analysis on hand to drive those, to drive the decisions? Yeah, as just the way we're looking to have equity woven into all this, over.
Yeah, it's a core, core component. Like I said, there's not much that we can do without the finances to support it, and that's, that goes for households and, and city government alike. And so I think the more that you bring it up in your questions, I think if we can anticipate that Commissioner Lark, at least, if not others, will mention the fiscal impact of different decisions we're making, then we'll prepare that along the way, and, and it is a specific requirement in many of these elements, and so I think, yeah, that will be an undercurrent theme.
And just one last question. I know we, there's a dedication, dedicated part for discussing the financing for like capital facilities utilities, but we also, if I recall correctly, you know, thinking of how we, how we pay for all this, how we finance all of this. Are we going to have kind of a policy discussion to go with it? Because oftentimes, we, we dress the planning part, and that's our wheelhouse, but unless we have a robust conversation around what policies we recommend to complement our planning, I don't think we're going to get to where our planning goals.
I think there's, we'll have, we're required to have a clear financing plan for the capital facilities, the roads, the parks, the fire stations, the, and all of that needs to kind of pencil out. Again, it doesn't, we don't have to secure it, all the funding ahead of time. There are a few places that, that planning isn't directly connected to and like general city government and operations, so I guess one way to put it that, that I thought of earlier is, we need to know how many libraries that we will need. We're probably not going to get into the, how many library staff and what the, you know, all of the operation piece of government. That's, that's outside of the scope of this. We should think about that, and generally, things that are good for the city budget are going to make for a more livable city, but capital facilities is the core of the financial piece.
All right, just to add on, I mean, I do think it's worth having the conversation because we can put these suggestions before the City Council that, you know, this is what not only our comp plan did, because we have to meet our, there's, if we recall back from last meeting, we had our little stacks of like, this is the income bracket we want to get, this is the housing bracket we want to get, this many housings, how does the units, this income we want to achieve. I mean, there's going to be market and non-market answers, and we have a lot of really good market-based answers that our consultants have talked about. I mean, is there going to be policy discussion about non-market answers to bring to the council to say, because it also seems that there's like, you know, market has the answer starting after this date. Until then, we're here. So will we have an opportunity to talk about that? Talk about policies like a, like, you know, setting up community land trusts or, or putting together, you know, municipal bonds to just build public housing, or to, for workforce, for working families, or, you know, doing, doing housing levies as part of this conversation, you know, saying like, if this is what we need, this is kind of the financing tools that we need to also do that. Will there be space for that set aside, or?
Yeah, I think housing is one where, where the financing piece is, especially the actions, and not so much who's going to pay for it and how we're going to pay for it, I think, but what the needs are and what the magnitude of the funding that would need to go to that. And I think that connects to the requirement to adequate provisions for all economic segments. And you remember the bar charts from last month, and there's going to be a big bar for zero to 30% AMI, and a big, then there's a bar for permanent supportive housing. That takes public funding. A lot of that is going to be state and federal funding. We need to identify the general magnitude. We're not going to be able to plan out how we're going to finance 1,600 shelter beds in the city over 20 years, and it's probably not going to be mostly the city that is providing that directly. But we should discuss it and, and put on the table that, that, either in qualitative terms or in half of the equation of, you know, as far as we know, that's going to cost X millions of dollars, and in general, the state's share of the housing trust fund that's been coming to Everett has been this much, and so, hey, there's a gap here, and somebody's going to have to close that, and, and that's going to be outside of our wheelhouse on how you get there, but addressing the need is, is part of the requirements, especially with housing.
I'm wondering if some of what Commissioner Lark is asking about will be covered when we meet in May of 2024 to show how we will be meeting the, the capacity, the housing capacity by income bracket? Is that going to be when we have that discussion at that point in time, or will there be an opportunity to answer some of the questions that Commissioner Lark is referring to prior to that?
I mean, we've got two meetings penciled in for housing element in July and August. Housing and land use are kind of intertwined, and this middle housing stuff has a major role with housing, but that, but the, the, the needs for all economic segments and everything. So wherever you see the word housing, I think we're going to have to be touching on that issue.
Additional questions? Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, I just wanted to hear a little bit more about the urban design because I saw it was optional. We kind of quickly went over it, but I see it's also for our August meeting. So I, I don't have a specific question, other than I'm just kind of curious what your thoughts are around that, or what your ideas on what we might discuss.
Yeah, we have development regulations that call out design-related, design-related topics, and I, what I would put in the bucket of design would be things that, things that are a little bit more on the aesthetic side than the functional side. We require architectural features with our large buildings, such as vertical modulation and horizontal modulation and articulation to break up the bulk of a building. You could build the building with or without that, and it would function generally the same, but we want to have an attractive city, and those regulate, there are regulations in, in a couple of chapters of Title 19, and those are guided by the vision and the policies and the goals in the urban design chapter. We would go through those provisions and policies and everything and, and think about, are they, do they still represent? I think they did a pretty solid update in 2015. There's things like gateway corridors and landscaping requirements and, and street trees and signs and all of the aspects of the visual landscape. So it would be, you know, we'll need to look through it and see what doesn't make sense anymore, what hasn't aged well, what is missing. I would put the middle housing piece is probably needing some attention and a new addition into that. What are the design aspects that can make this kind of new feature of a lot of neighborhoods blend in well? Porches, roof types, there's a lot in the historic neighborhoods for design requirements. There's less so in the others. We need to strike a balance between unduly burdening development to the point where we don't get anything at all.
Where do sidewalks fit into this? Would that be under design, or does that fall under something else?
I mean, transportation, there's a pedestrian component, and we have a pedestrian master plan and an Americans with Disabilities Act transition plan. So transportation element and the financing for that, I think that there's an important, there's an important, again, connection to middle housing. We get a lot of our sidewalks, we've, you know, we seek grant funds, and we have projects for sidewalks here, probably here and there, mainly focused on arterials and safe routes to schools, and we're building a project connecting downtown to Everett Station and everything. But if we're going to see a whole lot more development at a small scale, but still new residents and everything in residential neighborhoods, a lot of which don't have sidewalks, right now, I, you know, the, the, the funding for new sidewalks comes with development frequently, and there's a threshold at which you get frontage improvements in sidewalks. We have sidewalk priority areas that are designated that are more, more so required to get sidewalks and other areas less so required, and we may need to take a fresh look at that. So mainly transportation, I think.
Who would like to offer public comment?
We do have one person, ending in 0007. If you'd like to unmute yourself by pressing star six. No comment.
Okay, then it looks like we are to final new business. Is that correct? Oh, wait a minute, we have an old business section. Do we have an old business presentation?
We do, just a couple of follow-ups, and this isn't going to be as in-depth as the last item, but a couple of follow-ups on last month's conversation about the draft growth alternatives. And a couple of slides I mentioned at the end of the last meeting, that there were even more slides after that long meeting that we didn't get to, and there are just some things to think about, and one of them is sidewalks, as we get to our path to the preferred. So you remember this slide from last time? Here we are at phase two of the project, and... Did I go through these?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, so I, just as a reminder of our general scheme for the alternatives, we've got some geographies within the city, and the different alternatives essentially assign different housing types to each of those geographies. Metro Everett, which had a lot of work not too long ago, and we don't anticipate necessarily putting a lot of energy into the Metro Everett area, but the areas adjacent to it have a play role in the alternatives. Light rail station areas, and then we've got our major arterials, frontage, and then the frame, so that's immediately adjacent to the arterials, and then the couple of blocks off of there. Residential neighborhoods would be the parts outside of the arterial frontages, frames, station areas in Metro Everett that will be in the middle housing conversation. Special areas, that's a lot of the places that we have master plans going on, the riverfront and waterfront place, and maybe the, the colleges and some of the hospitals and Everett Mall and places like that that don't really fit in any individual category. And then employment areas, if you remember, we're focusing the alternatives largely on housing, not to say that we won't focus on making the employment areas all that they can be and addressing some of the shifts in the commercial building landscape, but those are generally the geographies. And then the different alternatives slot some of these different housing types into. Across the top, the columns there are different categories of residential typologies, and then you can see on the rows which types of buildings that you're more familiar with might fit into each of those. In general, you add intensity along, going from left to right, and then at some point, with minimum density type considerations, some of the lowest density housing types start to fall off. And then, thank you to the City of Anchorage, they're working on Anchorage 2040, very similar effort, they're working on middle housing, they're working on, I thought it'd be interesting actually to have a knowledge transfer, I imagine, I think the City of Anchorage is about the same size as the City of Everett, and so they, there's lots of these, I see the opticos, middle housing typology spectrum everywhere, and I was looking for a different one, and one that actually went all the way from, from, all the way from left to right. I think the opticos one kind of stops before you get to the mid-rise mixed-use housing on the side there. So all of those housing types that mentioned before generally fit into, into the scale here. And then we made some updates. These maps, we showed them a month ago, but they were preliminary, still not exactly done, but you can see how we would apply, so the different colors represent those columns that were in the chart table a couple of slides ago. And then those geographies, you can generally see the arterial frames and frontages and all of that. Maybe we can linger on this slide a little bit, but this would represent the definition of the alternatives, and then there would be numbers that would come out of this to ensure that they adequately capture the capacity that we need in different ways, and again, looking for differences between the alternatives, recognizing that 81%, I think it was, of the housing is going to be common to all, mainly because there's a lot of housing already in the city, and then the existing capacity that we have is fairly consistent throughout. Anything to add on that, Becky?
I think that's good.
Okay. Any questions? Actually, yeah, I guess we'll linger on this a little bit.
Is this, is this online, or is this available?
With all of these slides, every time we do a meeting, give them to Kathy on my way home, and, and she'll have them up online tomorrow morning under the Planning Commission webpage for everyone, public and commissioners.
And still draft, we haven't officially like released them as draft growth alternatives for public feedback.
I imagine these haven't been updated post the passage of, what was it, 13, as it was?
Eleven ten.
Eleven ten, thank you.
Yeah, that's, I, that's where I, we started the meeting mentioning I, alternative one, because its current plan's extended, doesn't add enough capacity to get us to our growth target. Alternative two doesn't meet the requirements of the new middle housing bill, alternative three does. I don't think we should or can or will shift course at this point to redefine alternatives two and three as two different versions of middle housing, and if we did, again, that would make the alternatives very similar again. So I, at, at this point, again, this is fresh for us, but the staff proposal would be to continue with this concentrated and dispersed, and the environmental review process is a great opportunity to discuss the implications of especially alternative three, which is going to be closer by law to what we wind up with. There's also a lot of discussion in the environmental impact statement of, of adverse impacts and mitigation strategies for those impacts. So we were not, at least today, planning on changing these alternatives in a great way.
Commissioner Finch, I want to let you make your comment, but maybe a question for commissioners to ponder, is that something that you will want to have a discussion about? About asking whether or not we should consider adjusting the alternatives? So just something to think about. Commissioner Finch, please.
On alternative three, what's happening in downtown? I, I can't see from here to there very well, but it looks like it's lower density in downtown than it is in alternative two. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. I believe that's correct. Oh, I believe that's correct. So what we're showing is in alternative two, we're adding significant growth capacity in Metro Everett plus the station. And alternative two, again, to provide separation, we wouldn't add as much into Metro Everett because again, that's a new plan and the growth would be more dispersed. But it would be as much as alternative one.
And in, I think all three alternatives, especially alternatives two and three, there's a dark shaded area, kind of where Baker Heights is. Is that Baker Heights?
Yes.
So that assumption's already been baked in?
We have, have put that in as an assumption.
Got it, thank you.
Not as a decision.
Uh huh, thank you, yeah.
One of the principles of the environmental impact statement is that it should cover the most impactful and bookends of possibilities. So with having that in the environmental impact statement, that ensures that we've adequately considered the impacts of that. But as Becky said, exactly, as an assumption, not a decision.
I guess the challenge with that is, given that there's an EIS associated with this process, I think it would be important not to gloss over or average the impacts of that development in that neighborhood relative to the overall impacts of implementing one of these alternative strategies. Because we're talking about putting significant density in a current area where there is little density. And I have to think that that has an economic impact on the services that will need to deliver to that area in order to serve those buildings. And so I think it's very important and I'm sure that Baker Heights, they're working on that currently, but I wouldn't want to gloss over the impact of that in a broader EIS.
Yeah, we'll put some more thought to that. It's a difficult timing aspect because there will be its own environmental impact statement just for that little rectangle that is going to have its entire lifespan while we're working on this broader one. So we, we'll put, we'll put a little bit more thought onto the, what, how to most appropriately reflect that in this environmental impact statement. We don't want to get to the point where we're having to change it, although we are expecting to do a supplemental or revised or something for our preferred alternative and we should know by then, we should know by the beginning of next year, what the future is at Baker Heights.
Do you remember offhand, how many, without the rezone, what was their max density out there?
Roughly townhouses.
Okay, so they couldn't go at all, that's, the height limit wouldn't let them have any, I thought we were just going from eight to 12 or something. Don't they have a right to go up?
It's like four floors and a UR3 zone, I think.
Okay, I might have misunderstood.
It's pretty modest, so it's.
Yeah, okay. And then, so on, just on the two alternatives, when we do the preferred or in the workshop or when we're having this conversation, there's a blending of these two. So it's not, we're doing this for a study for the EIS to show the, you know, to show them different.
Yes.
To do the studies, to make sure you're getting perspective from both, right? So we're looking at all kinds of good and bad, right? But during that workshop, we're not buying into one, we don't have to do one, we can blend these because there's some pretty incredible different benefits that you get from both.
Yeah.
My hope is that we come to some, someplace where we're actually doing both.
I was actually, you kind of jumped the gun on my question, well done. But I wanted to pose a question to the staff and actually to some of the commissioners, going back to when we had the study and we're talking about the amount of places that can take density. We're talking about concentration and it kind of goes back into the concentrated growth component of number two. In my mind, it comes from military planning and decision-making, SCAT, surprise, concentration, audacity and tempo. The concentration component allows you to overcome the enemy by focusing your force on a specific spot. So there's a, there's strategic advantages to concentration. So sometimes it's a, so I think that sometimes in my brain is either or. But when we were just talking about, when I was asking kind of like, why don't we just do everything and expand the number of places where we can go really high, our consultants seemed to suggest that that lack of concentration would like diminish the ability to do that. I guess it's the, but at the same time, I think, you know, why, how are we not creating more targets of opportunity for developers to go, yes, we can put, you know, more units there? So I guess, when we're thinking about concentration, like if someone can explain kind of the trade-offs or benefits or, because a part of me is going, I know we're going blended, but you know, why don't we just go blended, expand it, really just kind of say, you know, what's, this is whatever it would look like when we have 1.5 million people living here and let's just start marching towards that. And so like what are the, as a planning trade-offs, I mean, and zoning trade-offs, what are, what are the problems with that when we're setting that kind of larger numbers? I would just love a little more analysis from staff and from, you know, other commissioners as well to kind of weigh in and maybe I was misunderstanding the consultant's like analysis or misunderstanding the dichotomy, but you know, I just have a little bit of thoughts on that for my education purposes.
Always good questions from all of you. I appreciate your brain so much.
That's a generous.
I do, I very much appreciate all of your comments, but I just, so to add to that as far as just things to think about with the alternatives, are there pieces that are part of the consideration process for the first two alternatives which would really be a waste of time and resources to continue evaluating because they are no longer going to be feasible under what is now going to be required under the new state law? So I guess that's one question and you may not have that answer, that may just be a general question to consider going forward. And the other thing that comes to mind is, one, I really cannot wait for EHA to come back and present where they are with regard to the Park District project. I think that's going to be a really interesting conversation and see where they are as far as how their proposal has evolved. I remember when we were discussing capacity for the city and it came up that the higher you build, the less likely a developer is to greenlight that project because of the cost constraints when you go above, what, seven, eight floors or so? So we have a developer that is willing to go higher than that to allow us to meet capacity. So I think it's going to be an interesting discussion to hear, to hear those types of plans.
To that point, perhaps that developer's willing to go to the, those heights because it's publicly funded. So it's, they're not having to make their project pencil the same way. And so that's the concern.
That is very interesting and you know, I think that we should ask some questions about that because if you recall when we were on that tour, they were discussing the fact that because they have a credit rating, they have access to the bond market and other ways of funding that are not strictly taxpayer-driven. So I think we should ask some really pointed questions around that and get some answers on that.
I agree. On that tour, I asked them what it costs for them to develop a unit on land that they already owned and they said it was north of $800,000 a unit. That's not an economic unit. It doesn't make sense. So, to your, to your question about concentration, I don't have all the answers, but it strikes me that when development is concentrated, it's easier to justify investment in public infrastructure and that could be transportation or just the movement of water.
Yeah.
It also supports businesses at the street level because you have more bodies buying things at street level and that creates a certain level of activation. So I think there are many reasons for that, but there are probably other reasons why, you know, a more dispersed model also makes sense.
Yeah.
I guess I would look at that now that I think if we were to do, I mean, we always seem to shoot over the three now updates that I've been through in my career, the, they always shoot to kind of, well, they used to go with the middle number now. I'm not sure if we're going with the middle or the high middle or the high number.
Middle, yeah.
But, you know, they just made the restrictions so, with so few, you know, options. So I think if we actually had more than just shot for the, you know, the middle, if it was shot more, you would have more opportunities and I think you would have affordable housing.
Do, just kind of dovetailing off that, do you think like, say for example, like, you know, going back to the risk, like assuming risk to do a higher than seven-story building, making it more difficult to pencil, concentration, you know, I go back in my mind and I think of, you know, you know, it's like some MDMP military decision-making and planning, we think about shaping operations, setting conditions. Like, you know, what, what kind of shaping operations can we do in other parts of the city to help set conditions in other parts of the city to be more successful? And so you just, adding, you know, moderate density through all that helped set conditions to make things, make the case more favorable to financiers or investors to go, yeah, we can make, this building will probably pencil because the amenities are here, the population, the foot traffic is here to support that. So, I mean, I get the concentration component because like when I was working in DC in the restaurant business, we all clustered right next to each other because of the spillover. But, you know, what, what can, what other stuff can we be doing to just really push the, you know, what, what shaping operations can we do to push the ball forward and set conditions to be more favorable for our end state? And I've said shaping operations and stuff, I want to say remarks complete.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Okay. I think we have one final opportunity for the public to weigh in. Do we have any, anyone online who wishes to comment?
Star six to unmute yourself if you'd like to make a comment, please. 0007.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Chair chatters, I am so sorry. We've got a couple of more slides for thought provo-
Oh my goodness, okay.
For provoking of thought.
That was just such a great discussion.
It was, absolutely.
You're right, okay, well, I'm sorry, please continue.
Absolutely, no, absolutely. This was the right time, we wanted to linger on this slide for a little bit and these are the slides that we didn't, we didn't make it to last time. I'll just go through them very, very briefly. Again, some thought provoking, more along the lines of when we were working on a preferred alternative, what are some considerations for where a good place to grow on a small scale might be? Wanted to look at, we have existing policies that have some, that should guide our work and already do guide our city. Some of these are not going to be consistent with and would need to change to accommodate both the middle housing thing, you can see in these red, the red letters, assure a wide range of housing opportunities for sure, without major changes in most residential areas, the state has spoken on that one. Strongly discourage the spread of commercial zoning and uses in residential neighborhoods. We have taken that to heart in the definition of the alternatives and that seems to remain to be a reasonable policy. That's something we would want to test with you. I know we've had discussions about neighborhood, neighborhood commercial zoning and that might be a limited exception to that if we do a little bit more to support small-scale businesses. I think home occupations is a different topic than this. But first principle is our existing policies and the work that our predecessors have done to develop a vision for the city. Designated centers, we need to, we need to designate local centers in the city and there are requirements for these centers, such as an existing density of 10 activity units, which is jobs plus population per acre and some other ones along that. We have two designated regional growth centers in red, downtown Everett and the Southwest Everett Industrial Manufacturing Industrial Center. Earlier work, I'm not sure if it came through the Planning Commission at any point or not or it was just at a staff level, these centers, by the way, will be designated in the countywide planning policies and in the local comprehensive plan and become a factor in prioritizing regional, state and federal transportation funding. So funding will flow to support the centers that are designated in Everett and elsewhere. And there are those criterias and that can also be an organizing framework for our, for our land use planning. The three, the two light rail stations that aren't in regional centers and Everett Mall and the hospital college complex in the North Broadway area seem like reasonable candidates and I think these were flagged as potential candidate centers in earlier work. We'll need to take a look at that. Road type and width and presence of alleys has a major bearing on the appropriateness of development. Commissioner Lark, you mentioned Washington DC. The Building Height Act of 1900 or some long, long time ago in Washington DC, there was a kind of an urban legend that you couldn't build a building taller than the Washington Monument and actually their zoning framework follows the width of a street and you can see it on top there. The building, maximum building height is the width of the right-of-way plus 20 feet and then a little bit of an accommodation for a penthouse. And this is just to say that some streets have wider right-of-way and maybe that should be a bearing on what sorts of heights and building types are appropriate on a small scale. Parcelization and existing patterns of parcels. All four of those parts of the grid are in the City of Everett and they are all on the same scale. We have very small parcels, that's North Everett on the bottom right and then we have the more post-war cul-de-sac type of a pattern in other places. The, the things that aren't roads are buildings and houses. So that obviously makes a difference in what makes sense in different places. Sidewalks and bike lanes. Blue is where we have sidewalks right now. Lots of sidewalks in the north end of the city, not so many in the south end of the city. Can this be an opportunity to extend sidewalks to places that want it already and use development to do that? Can it be a positive or a challenge? These east-west corridors, there are minor arterials at fairly regular intervals through the city and right now they don't really change the development pattern. It's R2 and 20-foot setbacks and everything, whether you're on Madison or whether you're not on Madison. Maybe it makes sense to look at these east-west streets? Maybe not. Oh, there, there you are, I couldn't see him. And that's it. So, so a couple of things to think about, there's hundreds more, but thank you for that.
Time for one more great discussion.
I just had a quick clarification question on the slide where you were presenting the two rules or whatever from the state, there's the writing in red, it was like no, yeah, like three or four back.
Those are our own policies and our existing comprehensive plan.
I just didn't understand, I know what commercial zoning is, but I don't know what commercial zoning is at the exact same time. So strongly discourage the spread of commercial zoning and uses in residential neighborhoods. Would that apply to somebody or a neighborhood that's like, hey, we want to have enough space for a coffee shop and bakery? Is that the same thing? Is that what you're, is that what that means? Are those the same thing?
I think so.
Or is there different?
So how we would implement it, and this is a good case study in how we would implement a policy, one of them is to guide our work right now in updating the comprehensive plan and that's kind of a chicken and an egg because we're going to be writing and revising policies at the same time as we should give strong weight to the policies that have already been written. If there were a rezone application and somebody said, I would like to change a R2 residential parcel that is right next to Broadway to expand my business to have a larger commercial footprint, staff would review that request and we would look to the policies and it would say, huh, strongly discourage the spread of commercial zoning and we'd say, don't think this is consistent with the, with the comprehensive plan, we're going to recommend not approving it and you probably wouldn't be able to. If that said something different, if it was kind of dithering and, you know, then it's not so helpful. If it says, go ahead and spread commercial zoning everywhere, then we would say yes.
So does that mean, and again, I know it's just because I'm new to some of this stuff, does that mean, you know, we're saying we strongly discourage, no? Is that because we can't define what commercial is then for like the builder, for example? So the reason I'm bringing this up is I'm thinking of like neighborhoods in Seattle that are enjoyable for the people around it, like the parts of like North Ballard, like 80th and 24th or littler neighborhoods that have smaller businesses, but we don't have that in all parts of the neighborhood. So I'm just trying to connect those dots or understand the differences between some of these definitions. So that's not really a question, but that's where I'm coming from.
Yep, yep. It should be clear to the reader and there may be other parts of the plan that would help flesh that out besides this policy. But yeah, the, these things, the more clear and actionable and please fewer, we have more, I mean, it's a, there's a lot of policies and when we do get a rezone request or a request to modify a development regulation in a certain way, we got to read all of those and you try to apply them to a decision and it's very hard when there's a thousand policies. And so I would love to get to a point where they are concise, actionable, clear and obvious for everybody. That helps predictability into the future and everything.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question, really great question. With regard to sidewalks, and you, you already know, this is something that's near and dear to my heart, I, I hear a lot of comments from community members that use public transit, how, how that impacts them, so, and then, we should, when we, we talk about evaluating all of these pieces through a DEI lens, we definitely need to consider folks' mobility issues, folks with mobility issues and not having sidewalks, and, and how that, how that impacts the community. So, I'm sure that will be part of the discussion as we continue forward. The, the Southwest Industrial Designated Center is really interesting, and I, I heard something that was really cool about it, and don't quote me on the numbers, but it's something around, Sea-Tac Airport does like, 20 billion in economic activity, whereas our airport does like, 60 billion in economic activity. Yeah, it, it's, we have an amazing impact on our economy in that particular area, so, just a fun fact to marinate on. Additional discussion? No? Okay. And now, because we have finally concluded, despite me trying to rush this through before, we, we do have one last opportunity for public comment.
All right, caller ending in zero 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 seven, if you would like to make a comment now, please press star six to unmute yourself. He's unmuted, but we can't hear him. I think so, it looks like he's talking. Nope, no comment.
Okay, thank you.
And if anybody has comments for staff or for the Planning Commission, the email is on, we'll definitely share it in writing with all the Planning Commission and with staff and everything, so.
Great. Any additional new business? Okay, other than welcoming Commissioner Sullivan, we're very happy you're here. And with that, we're adjourned, thank you.